Good evening. I am Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth Area. And I would like to welcome our candidates, our audience, and also our viewers on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Wayzata Plymouth Area and our co-hosts, the League of Women Voters, Crystal New Hope East Plymouth Robinsdale League. The League of Women Voters is a 103-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring these forums to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the topics that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum, and we ask that campaign buttons and T-shirts not be worn nor signs or literature distributed in this room. At this time, please silence your electronic devices. And now I would like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Melissa Muslinger of Maple Grove and a League of Women Voters Wayzata Plymouth Area member.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good evening. This forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for City Council Ward 2, 4, and at-large. There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this, so if your question is not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. Recordings of this event, whether in person or by computer, may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League will only allow audio slash video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety, except by any media reporting on the event. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with one minute to state their experiences, platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office being sought. Questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that candidates be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. For those in the audience, if you have a question, please write it on one of the 3x5 cards supplied and raise your hand to have it picked up by a volunteer. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used, and those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. The City of Plymouth has four races on the ballot: Mayor, City Council Ward 2, City Council Ward 4, and City Council at-Large. There is no League of Women Voters forum scheduled for the City of Plymouth mayor race -mayoral race because the candidate, Jeff Washi, is running unopposed. The candidates running for Plymouth City Council Ward 2 are Julie Peterson and Lee Ziesmer. The candidates running for Plymouth City Council Ward 4 are Jamie Page, Julie Pointner, and James Williams. Candidates running for Plymouth City Council at-Large are Derek Anderson, Clark Greger, and Neha Markanda. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum this evening. At-Large candidates Derek Anderson and Neha Markanda declined to attend. As stated in our candidate participation policy, we will proceed with Ward 2 candidates Julie Peterson and Lee Ziesmer, Ward 4 candidates Jamie Page, Julie Pointner, and James Williams, and at-large candidate Clark Greger. We will begin with Julie Peterson to give introductory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and to my fellow candidates for participating this evening. I'm Julie Peterson. I'm a wife, mother to three sons, and practicing attorney. As an attorney, I have served as a judicial law clerk in northern Minnesota, as a deputy attorney general in the state of Hawaii, and I currently serve as in-house counsel for an organization focused on the security and reliability of the electric grid, and I currently serve on the Plymouth Charter Commission. I've been knocking on your doors, having rich conversations, and hearing what matters to you. I'm committed to being a nonpartisan leader who sets a positive tone for our community and prioritizes civility, collaboration, and consensus building. As your city councilperson, I will focus on our infrastructure and core services, strive to protect our environment, and prioritize a healthy business community, affordable housing, excellent parks and recreation, safe and secure streets, and a commitment to diversity and inclusion for all.
Thank you.
I'm putting leadership first, and I'm asking for your vote on November 8th.
Thank you, and now we will hear from Lee Ziesmer.
So hi, my name is Lee Ziesmer, and I am running for Plymouth City Council because I would like to perform my civic duty and serve my community. I believe partisan politics have no place in City Hall, especially at City Council, and I believe I'm the best suited to lead us forward and remain unbiased. I've lived in Plymouth for about 15 years. I'm an insurance agent, have my own insurance agency where I focus on Medicare with specialty in veterans' benefits. I'm already an active member in the community with the Community Emergency Response Team, the Plymouth Lions, Plymouth Crime and Fire Prevention Fund. I'm an election judge, I'm on the Plymouth Rotary, I volunteer with Park and Rec. So it seemed a natural progression for me to continue serving the public as a council member. So my name is Lee Ziesmer, I ask for your vote in November, so vote Lee Ziesmer. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Jamie Page.
Hello, my name is Jamie Page, and it would be an honor to represent Ward 4 on Plymouth City Council, and I would appreciate your vote. First, I can't even tell you how much fun running for City Council has been for me. Getting to meet our neighbors is something that I absolutely love. It's humbling to me that people share their stories, their concerns, their dreams as freely as they do. I've knocked on over 1,000 doors personally, and I've learned from hundreds of people that basically everybody wants the same things for their loved ones. First, they want to feel safe, and they want to feel like they belong. We are blessed to have a fantastic police force, and we need to continue to support them. Unfortunately, there are some intersections that have been extremely dangerous, and solving that problem needs to be a top concern. Second, our neighbors in Plymouth want to continue to invest in our parks, trails, and natural resources to leave a legacy for future generations. And third, let's keep our taxes low while delivering the high-quality services we've come to expect. I look forward to sharing more this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Julie Pointner, please.
Thank you. Hi, I want to thank both the League of Women Voters, along with my fellow candidates, for tonight's debate. My name's Julie Pointner, and I am running for the Ward 4 seat on the Plymouth City Council. I ran for this seat in 2018 because I believed Ward 4 needed representation for all of its residents. As I promised then and I reaffirm now, Plymouth is stronger and a more inclusive city when all voices feel heard. I promise to listen to all sides of any and all issues. For the past two years as a planning commissioner, I have worked with developers and city staff to ensure the best use of our resources as Plymouth plans for the future. My service in this role has taught me about many complicated factors that need to be weighed when making important decisions about the city's future. In my work on the commission, I've appreciated hearing from all sides of an issue, and I've often been involved in creating consensus among parties. I have spent the last 17 years in the field of research. This experience has included analyzing, technical writing, budgeting, ensuring compliance with state and federal regulations. I look forward to tonight's format and I, as well as earning your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. James Williams, please.
Good evening. My name is James Williams, and I'm running for the Plymouth City Council representing our 4th ward. My 30-year tenure in the City of Plymouth has afforded me the best breadth and depth of experiences to help solve the many challenging problems that our city faces today. Those experiences include, but are not limited, again, to being a 30-year resident, 20-year member of the Plymouth Rotary Club, 15-year owner and operator of the medical clinic, Life Force Therapies, which was a neurological medical clinic. I'm a widower and a father of a son and a daughter who are both graduates from Plymouth High Schools. I'm a commissioner on the Plymouth Housing Redevelopment Authority, a 2018 graduate of the Plymouth Safety Citizens Academy. I'm a member of the West Suburban Men's Public Safety Committee and currently attending the 2022 Plymouth Environmental Academy. My top three priorities, if I'm blessed to be elected, would want to be to enhance and sustain public safety, to provide more affordable housing through public-private partnerships, and attracting appropriate commercial businesses for the redevelopment of the Four Seasons Mall and other viable commercial areas.
Thank you. And Clark Greger, please.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to share some ideas tonight and to listen to the multiple viewpoints of my fellow candidates for the betterment of our community. My name's Clark Greger. I grew up in our community, and after college and starting my career, I returned to raise my family here. Throughout my life, I've been active in service to our community. I chaired the Environmental Quality Committee, and now I serve on the Charter Commission and the Planning Commission. This experience means that I understand how our city government works, and I know how it can be more transparent, more inclusive, and more responsive to you. I've been working on this campaign for about a year now, listening to residents, community groups, and learning everything I can about our city government. I look forward to sharing with you more about my priorities tonight, and I really look forward to the conversation with all of you.
Thank you all. I will now start the questions, and you will be answering in a rotating order. You will have one minute for each question. Going forward, I will refer to you as candidate and your last name. I'm happy to repeat any question, especially after we get into the third or fourth person answering, and I do want to remind you again, it might be difficult, but please do keep an eye on the signs and stop very close to when you see that stop sign. Thank you. So we will start question one with candidate Greger, and that question is, what is your top priority for Plymouth as a council candidate, and how would you address it?
I have several key priorities if elected to the City Council. First of all, I think it's very important that we responsibly continue to manage our city finances and infrastructure, and I would address that by taking a lot of consensus and working with my fellow City Council members to craft a forward-looking, long-term budget and plan, making sure that we aren't looking just at the short term and our needs right now, but making sure that we have a long-term vision. My next priority is for transparent and responsive government. That includes responsive public safety, it includes being inclusive of many points of view in the decision-making at our city. And then my final priority is for stronger environmental leadership in our city, and I have demonstrated that by chairing the EQC and launching our Environmental Academy last year, and I'd like to see that taken leaps and bounds further.
Thank you. Next, candidate Pointner, please.
Thank you. I have, again, like candidate Greger, I have a couple priorities that I'd like to work on. First of all, I'd like to have us take a look at affordable housing, and affordable housing has different definitions for everyone in the city, so it's not just one definition of what's affordable. I'd like to help with transit in the city, to help our businesses because we need employees, our unemployment rate is really low, and if businesses need to thrive, we need employees. So I think the two go together with affordable housing, and once we have people who can live in Plymouth, we'll have more workers in Plymouth, and it'll be a healthier and brighter city.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
Thank you. My top three priorities, as I indicated earlier, is to enhance and sustain public safety, provide more affordable public housing through private-public partnerships, attracting appropriate commercial businesses for redevelopment of the Four Seasons Mall and other viable commercial areas in Plymouth. Why? Public safety is the foundation for our community and society by providing an environment where long-term growth and development is possible. Without this foundation, no other goals can be achieved on a sustainable basis. Number two, affordable housing. The most important challenge in Plymouth starts with the understanding of how affordable housing is critical for local employers, employees, family stability, and the educational opportunity and success for all children, and how redevelopment is important for refreshing a community so it meets the constant changing needs of our population over time. And as we all know, the only thing that is constant is change.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson.
My top priority has been a clear theme of my campaign, which is putting leadership first. To me, as important as the decisions that a council member might make, is the leadership that they demonstrate in making those decisions. It's key to me to make sure that I know I have an obligation in a nonpartisan seat, to make sure that I am listening to all viewpoints, seeking out alternate viewpoints, and understanding those viewpoints, and then there's an obligation to analytically and objectively evaluate those issues as they come before you, and that is really a key element of having leadership first in these roles. And to me, if you don't have that, then everything else falls to the side. So that is the foundation and the cornerstone of my campaign and how I will serve as a city councilperson.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, my top three concerns are, number one, keeping our city safe, and we need to do this by maintaining our strong police force. We've been blessed to have a great police force. I have the statistics here that crime is decreasing throughout our city, and that is fantastic. Going door-to-door, people still don't quite feel safe, and there's a number of reasons. Some of it is the intersections that they live by, that specifically there's a problem at 55th and Vicksburg that needs to be addressed, and that needs to be a top priority. The people at 55th and Vicksburg are passionate about that situation. Number two, the value of our natural resources. We got to keep the natural resources throughout Plymouth to be the jewels that they've become. Plymouth is known around the country for our natural resources and our parks, and they are the top. Number three, we need to make sure that we continue to attract and retain the businesses that help us provide a low tax base for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ziesmer.
Thank you. My number-one priority is fiscal responsibility. In 2008, we were listed as the number-one city, and we had a 0% tax levy increase, and I would like to look at that and ask why are we having a 7% year-over-year-over-year tax increase? I'd like to go back to being the number-one city, and I think that we have to look at ourselves and ask why, what are we doing if we're increasing our spending? What should we cut? And I think that's going to be my number-one priority, followed by public safety and environmental stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question two. Plymouth residents are concerned about public safety. What are your ideas to keep our communities safe? And we will start this question with candidate Ziesmer.
Thank you. It's a very good question. So we do have a first-class, nationally-recognized police force, and I think, first of all, one thing that I would like to do, and we're actually starting to work on this with our Community Emergency Response Team, is presenting classes to the public that teach people how to, they teach fire safety, teach first aid, crime prevention. So one of my priorities is creating classes to help people understand how to address that, and I think that's it. We have a first-class police force, and I think we need to continue to give them the tools and the training and the support that they need.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question one more time?
Of course. Plymouth residents are concerned about public safety. What are your ideas to keep our communities safe?
Thank you. I do sympathize with anybody who has been the victim of a crime, and it's something that we shouldn't have to experience as residents of our community, but the fact remains that Plymouth actually is remarkably a remarkably safe community and continues to be so. Crime is actually even slightly down in the City of Plymouth over the same point this time last year, and so we're on the right trajectory. I do think that as councilmembers, what we can do about crime in our community is to support our law enforcement and to make sure that they have the resources that they need to do the very good work that they do in our community.
Thank you. Candidate Greger.
I was at the City Council study session on Tuesday night, and one of the staff members said, "Quality of life starts with feeling safe in your community." And I really took that to heart, that to have a good quality of life, we need to have strong public safety, and we need our residents to feel safe. So I, as Julie said, I really empathize with people who have been victims of crimes. A few years ago, we were awakened at our house when somebody was jumping over a fence and running through our backyard and tried to open the door into our house. So luckily, the door was locked, we saw them run away, and the police caught the guy. But I know that feeling, and I don't want our residents to have that feeling. And I've talked with our police chief, and I've done a lot, I've attended our Citizens Academy where I met Lee, and I think building community is the key way to further enhance our public safety as well as supporting our police. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
While going door-to-door, the topic of safety and crime is one of the most frequent concerns. Our neighbors simply do not feel as safe as they once did, even though statistically crime is decreasing in Plymouth. While Plymouth has an amazing police force and does an incredible job every day, it's apparent that our neighbors would like to see more. They'd like to see more patrol cars visiting their neighborhood, they'd like to use more signs that do speed awareness, they'd like to have more tickets issued for speeding and more vigilance against petty crimes. There's also many concerns around roads and intersections in several neighborhoods, like the one I mentioned, the example of the intersection at 55th and Vicksburg, and I've learned that this is a complex issue with many sides that include pedestrian safety, traffic flow, and speed control. Our neighbors have very valid concerns, and they are passionate about keeping their family and their neighbors and their friends safe. Addressing these concerns takes money. I would prioritize using taxpayer dollars to prioritize continuing our strong police force and doing traffic studies on these dangerous intersections.
Thank you. Candidate Pointner.
I agree with what everybody has said up here so far, and I do support the Plymouth Police Department. It is nation-leading and is used and looked at from other police departments across the country. I too sympathize with crime victims, but I do want to also point out that we have to take a look at Plymouth and not look at other communities around us, and focusing on that and building up fear. Right now, you can support us, there's openings at the police force, so if you know of anybody that would like to be hired, it's out there. It is a wonderful police department. The other thing is community engagement. I really, really strongly hope that neighborhood watch groups and all that things that go on with people taking hold of things in their life come into being, because when I was a block manager, it was the most exciting job. So I thank you.
Thank you. So I've had a good suggestion. For the next round, I will give you an idea of who the first three folks speaking will be, so you could start thinking about it, and then the next three. So let's try that next with question three.
James.
See? I told them I would do it one time, so hopefully that's my one time. James, please.
Thank you very much. As I stated earlier, I am a member of the West Suburban Men's Public Safety Group, and this is an organization comprised of Western suburban police chiefs from Minnetoka, New Hope, Plymouth, and Crystal, together with concerned citizens to establish a sustained, constructive, and vibrant connection between local law enforcement and people of color, resulting in safer neighborhoods for us all. We worked approximately two years in developing a strategic safety plan entitled Escalating Hope and De-Escalating Fear, where we identified areas that needed reforming for consideration to the state legislature. Now during this process, like everything else, COVID took us off our schedule, the subcommittee schedules changed, and we were not able to get back on track. But the one thing that I would tell you to do is to get involved, be involved in the discussion, make a difference. Do not let perfection be the enemy of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize.
That's all.
Be in line. So there is a question on safety. Some communities are putting restrictions on the use of no-knock warrants. Where do you stand on this issue? So I will be asking candidate Williams, Page, and Peterson in that order. So we will start with candidate Williams.
Well, I have to say that I'm a recovering attorney, so I start with the proposition that search warrants have to be reasonable, and unreasonable search warrants cannot be used to maintain stability in our legal system. So search warrants are great when you have the basis for having a search warrant, when it's been issued properly. Un-knock warrants, I do not favor that. It leads to various concerns, mystery, unsafety. For many, involve both the law enforcement officers as well as the people where there be knocking on their doors. We've seen incidences where people who were innocent have been killed or injured simply by being at the wrong place at the wrong time, not having any involvement in any particular crime. So I support law enforcement. I'm very, very skeptical about unreasonable no-knock search warrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
I am not a recovering attorney, so this is a new topic for me, and honestly, as I've been outgoing door-to-door, this topic has not come up, so I have not researched it, I don't have the data. So I think being on the City Council means that I'm a good listener, and I guess I would want to learn and listen and get a lot more data before I'd make a stronger opinion. But in my opinion, the police force here is outstanding, and if they think that's a tool that they need to perform, then I would support that, and if there gets to be too much public pushback, then I would look at what are the results of those warrants and determine the benefit versus the cost of doing those warrants.
Thank you. And candidate Peterson.
Thank you. I'm an active practicing attorney, though not in the area of criminal law, at least not currently, though in past episodes of my legal career, I have touched on questions related to this. And I understand the concerns related to it. I have not had the opportunity to discuss it specifically with our Plymouth law enforcement, and I think in order to form a final opinion about it, I would certainly want to make sure I have those conversations and understand their perspectives on this, as well as, of course, other perspectives also. I understand, like candidate Page mentioned, that the concerns with it and the drawbacks, but I also want to make sure that I have a full picture before making a final decision about where I would stand on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next lineup will be candidate Greger, Ziesmer, and Pointner. Do you need me to repeat the question?
That'd be great.
Okay. Some communities are putting restrictions on the use of no-knock warrants. Where do you stand on this issue?
I think it's a very reasonable question to talk about restrictions and being cautious and limited when it comes to that kind of an invasion of somebody's home or their private space. And I think the key word there is restrictions. It doesn't mean an all-out ban, and I think, as several of my fellow candidates have said tonight, we need to look at the issue very specifically in speaking with our police force. I have met with our police chief, and this is a question I didn't ask him, but I wanted to follow up because it crossed my mind, and I wondered, how many times have we used a no-knock warrant in Plymouth? Is this a big issue for our city, or is it something that we should be? Plymouth? Is this a, a big issue for our city, or is it something that we should be very thoughtful in when and if we ever use a no-knock warrant? I attended our police citizens academy and I've learned a lot about our police force. And I know that they are very well-trained and they are a good example of good policing in our community, in our state, and in our nation.
Thank you. Candidate Ziesmer.
Thank you. When I was younger, I was all for the no-knock warrant. I thought it would, it was better for police safety catching criminals off, or by surprise. But as I, you hear the stories about people being shot and killed just for being at somebody's house, being in the wrong place at the wrong time. And I've, I've come to think that maybe there should be some restrictions on the no-knock warrants. I'm not a big fan of them anymore. Now, if it came to a policy decision, as I believe Clark had mentioned, you know, that'd be something we would have to sit down with our police chief and the police and, and have an honest, open discussion about it and listen to what the residents wanted on that. But personally, I've, I've grown to kind of become against them. But like I said, as a policy decision, that would, it would take a lot of bit, a lot of research and listening before we can make a decision on that.
Thank you. Candidate Pointner.
I think that this is a first. We all agree on something. I think that this is an issue that needs to be researched in Plymouth. It's not just Plymouth. It's Hennepin County Sheriff, it's the state troopers, it's anybody who would like the BCA, anybody who would like to come into Plymouth and perform a no-knock warrant. It's scary. It's, and points disturbing. But I too think a policy needs to be made when all the facts are put out there. And I would hope that people understand that there's, there needs to be a look at the policy and exactly the details of what it's going to be before we make a decision. I too, though, have, have leaned more towards no-knock, but I, I really think that we need to take a look at everything and make the decisions, not just for Plymouth, but for other departments that come into Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four. And we will have candidate Pointner, Williams, and Ziesmer. According to the 2020 census, the Plymouth population includes 27% people of color and our schools are 40% students of color. Presently, Plymouth does not have a human rights commission or a DEI manager, diversity, equity, and inclusion. As a council member, how would you approach diversity, equity, and inclusion in city hiring and policy development to represent all Plymouth residents? And we will start with candidate Pointner.
This is a really important topic to me, as my daughter just walked in. I have been helping a resident here in Plymouth who is having problems. She is of Mexican, where she lives from Mexico, and she's lived in Plymouth for 20 years and never had a problem until this year. Her management company of the townhouse is, has been being extremely abusive towards her and wants her out. And when I got the call that this was happening, I sent my son-in-law, who is also from Mexico, and he has been helping. And we are still helping this family get through this process of human rights. And what a wonderful opportunity it would have been for, if we had a DEI person in the office. Right now, I could have turned to them and said, "We hear this is happening. Can you help us?" Not that I want to stop doing it, but it would be really great if somebody could step up and help people in the city of Plymouth. I also think there should be a commission or a committee that is out there for people to have the opportunity to, to hear the stories of the other residents in Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I think it's very critical that we have DEI. When we look at our community, we're comprised of various types of people. When we say people of color, that's not specific enough. There are people coming from all around the world here. They're coming from various cultures, various experiences and backgrounds. And it's in our interest to bring all of these talented, skilled people together so that we can produce the very best results for our community. And when we start to exclude the participation of certain groups, simply because they don't look like us, or they don't sound like us, or they don't have our background and experiences, when we rob our community. Because that is the wealth in our community, is the diversity of what we have. So I say, let's maintain that diversity. Let's keep DEI because it's a critical component to long-term success in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ziesmer.
Thank you. That's a great question. I think when it comes to DEI, everybody wants those things. Everybody wants people to feel included. Everyone wants people to, to participate in the games. Everyone wants to help people up from where they're at. If you don't have anything to help them up with, you can lend them your hand. So I think it's very important that we, that we do recognize those things and we recognize that there are issues and that we need to work on them. When it comes to a position like an HR position or a DEI position, I think we need to be mindful in how we act on that and make sure that that person is able to be measured in their success and have metrics on how we base that position. But I think it's very important to be focusing on those things and make sure everybody has a voice.
Thank you. And then the next order will be candidate Peterson, Gregor, and Page. So candidate Peterson.
Thank you. I think the first thing that we can do to improve our diversity in Plymouth is by electing another woman to the Plymouth City Council. It was pointed out to me that there are actually currently more gyms than women on our city council. No offense to the gyms in the audience who are our city council members. So let's start right there. But I also would support that DEI role, that, the manager role that is a posted position with the city of Plymouth. I understand the current status is that we're waiting for us to hire the human resources director. Once that is established, then, then we'll begin searching for that new person for that DEI role. And then, once that is in position, my understanding is the next step is to look at reinstating that human rights commission. I think all of those are very worthy endeavors that I support.
Thank you. Candidate Gregor.
This is a great point of discussion, and I think there's a lot of strength to be found in diversity. As James was saying, the diversity of our city is a great, a great asset to Plymouth. And we want to make sure that all kinds of people, whether their diversity is in the way they look, or in the way that they, their age, the way that they're, they have mobility or ability, we want to make sure that all of those different aspects of diversity are accommodated and welcomed in Plymouth. I think that the DEI role on the human, in the city, is a valuable role. And I think that Lee made a really good point that there should be some metrics or ways to measure that. But that, having that role would do a lot of things for helping our city with retention of staff, with efficiency in our government, and making sure that more citizens feel welcome and feel heard.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
Thank you, and I'm glad I go by Jamie and not Jim, for goodness sakes. So I, like I said, I've been over to over a thousand homes and I spoke with hundreds of our neighbors and with a range of socioeconomic and cultural diversity. And as I've learned from our neighbors, I'd say less than 10 people have stated that diversity, equity, and inclusion is a concern. And it's always important that we continue to learn and we continue to understand our changing world. And we do this by listening, which I've been trying to do, and by observing. The other day, Jenny and I, my wife Jenny and I, were out putting up signs and we drove by Timber Shores Park. And there was, it was a spectacular day and there was a group of young men out playing cricket. I mean, when does that happen? A few years ago, you would not have seen men playing cricket in the parks in Plymouth. So after hours of listening to our neighbors and getting to know them a bit, I want to make sure that we understand the problem that we're trying to solve before we start spending taxpayer dollars on new issue, on new positions. It's my vision that we build a community where neighbors serve one another, irregardless of what background they may be.
Thank you. And now we will move on to question five. Several Plymouth properties need redevelopment, such as the Four Seasons Mall and the Burger King's site east of 494. And I understand the Prudential property. What priority do you place on such redevelopment and how would you approach it? And we will start with candidate Page, Gregor, and Pointner. Candidate Page.
All right. So like I said, I've been over to, over, well over a thousand homes myself personally. And the redevelopment of Four Seasons Mall, that's by far the biggest topic that gets brought up to me. Our neighbors, they miss the convenience of a local hardware store, that great pizza place, and a studio for their children to take dance lessons. We've all been there, right? So, most of the people believe the bulk of the attention and the tax dollars in Plymouth are being focused on the west side and the east side is just considered less important. So when I tell them a building is scheduled to be removed before the spring, many of them just don't believe it. And there's been too many promises and too many developments spoken about with not enough action. So today, I spoke with a very helpful employee at the city, and she did confirm the old mall will be removed over the winter. She also told me that the city received $883,000 grant from the Bass Creek watershed to help clean up the soil. And we know that cleaning up that soil and making it stable will speed up the redevelopment of the property. This is good news for all of Plymouth. We have a unique chance to shape that property for now and for use in the future.
Thank you. Candidate Gregor.
I've been serving on the planning commission for the last year, and this is exactly the type of issue that comes before the planning commission. How we consider redevelopment, how we consider the future of these different properties. I've also taken the time to meet neighbors around several of these areas of development and knock on their doors and hear about the specific concerns that they have. When it comes to the Four Seasons Mall, most of the neighbors are saying, "Something, please, just do something," as Jamie was saying. They, they don't believe anything's going to happen. And so it's good to know that we are getting to the point where we're going to tear that down and something is on the horizon for the Four Seasons Mall. But they also share that they're, they're concerned, as we've been talking about earlier, about safety, about traffic, and the implications of redevelopment. And that, I think, is really where we, as a city council, can come in and we can have a stronger hand in figuring out the timing of stoplights. Do we put in a roundabout, that kind of thing.
Thank you. Candidate Pointner.
As Carca said, at the planning commission, we've had a lot of these discussions specifically around the new redevelopment, not just at Four Seasons, but on Nathan Lane and the Prudential site, as well as on Highway 73 and 55. Oh, sorry, you put stop up. Sorry, get my mojo back. The biggest thing is that there is some movement at the Four Seasons. The Burger King, I talked to someone at the city today, and that is with the lawyers right now. Burger King owns the property and they have, have decided not to sell it. It was similar to what was happening with Walmart at Four Seasons. The other thing that was really great is that we've had these discussions about traffic. And I can say that the traffic, the truck traffic coming off Nathan will be redidverted with the new property if everything gets approved. So I really am excited to hear of all the new processes that are going on. And I'm very lucky, I feel very lucky to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have one more sentence? Because I know that did throw you off, so.
That was like weird. I went, wait, I have to stop. I think the biggest thing that is most important is that we get public input. And I really hope that people come to the planning commission and city council and please, please come talk to us because that's, we need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will have candidate Williams, Ziesmer, and Peterson. So candidate Williams, please.
When I relocated to Plymouth in 1992 from Hong Kong, the Four Seasons Mall was a thriving, vibrant area. It was the center of our community. The pizza place and all the other shops and everything that went on there were vitally important for our community. Sadly to say, over the past, I don't know, seems like 100 years, but let's say 10 years, the Four Seasons Mall has been an eyesore. It's been a grave. It is not our future. There are a lot of things that are going on at that Four Seasons Mall that should not be going on. And notwithstanding the significant efforts of Chief Fadden and his public safety group, it's an attractive nuisance. It attracts the wrong people during the wrong thing and it makes other people in the community feel unsafe. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that we get on tap, having a multi-site facility that's conducive to the needs and desires and wants of that community. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Peterson.
I think you said Lee was next.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I'm happy to go.
We'll do Lee's first.
Thank you. I think this is another one of those things that we can all agree on and probably everybody in this room, that something needs to be done with Four Seasons and the east side of Plymouth. We, and I, what candidate Page had said, it's great that they did get a, a grant to help with the soil over there and to take that, that building down. We need to remain an attractive place to do business and an attractive place to live. And we need to be mindful about how we bring those two together. And we need to be mindful, and I mentioned the tax levies previously, the businesses have to pay those too. And so if we want to continue to bring in, you know, top manufacturers and, and big businesses and unique small businesses, we have to be mindful in how we bring all those things together and, and budget fiscally, I think, a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you. If I heard the question correctly, I think it was asking, what priority do we place on redevelopment as candidates for city council? And I think we all have to have it near the top of our list. Earlier tonight, I mentioned that leadership is my number one issue, but this is a close second. And I will tell you that it's a really important issue for the city of Plymouth. We are not at a full build-out, but we're not that far away from it either. And we're going to increasingly need to be looking at how we're going to be redeveloping the spaces that we have. Redevelopment allows us to imagine, reimagine aging and vacant areas, and it's key to keeping our community vibrant and requires a long-term vision. This is an absolute high priority for me as a candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six. Members of the public have raised concerns about some Plymouth City Council work processes. For example, Plymouth does not record council work session discussions. There are no rules forbidding council members from making financial or professional gains due to their council positions. And the Plymouth City Charter specifies the mayor be equal to all other council members and not above them. How would you address these concerns? And we will have candidate Peterson, Ziesmer, and Page.
Thank you. I think the, the three issues were not recording study sessions, the mayor council structure, and what was the second one?
Financial or professional gains due to position.
Sure. With respect to the study sessions, I understand they're currently not recorded. To be honest, I'm not exactly sure why. So I would want to understand why before I would take a position about it. It certainly seems like it would be more transparent to our citizens to have those recorded and, and viewable. So that's something I see as a legitimate concern I'd like to learn more about. With respect to the second one, I think that should be a no-brainer. Anything that can ensure ethics for our community, people who are serving our community is very key. So that sounds like a, a good issue. And then, our, our council mayor structure is, is very common city government structure and I think has generally served our community well. And I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with the way that that is currently structured. Thank you.
Candidate Ziesmer.
Thank you. As far as recording the study sessions goes, again, yeah, I would have no problems with those being recorded. I, I, I just don't know if the question maybe has just not come up, or if they've made a rule on that, but I wouldn't see any reason for them not to be. The appearance of impropriety is very important. And correct, yes, the, no council member should be able to make any kind of financial gain from their position. In fact, I just, you know, I would have assumed that that was written into the rules. If it's unethical, immoral, or illegal, I don't think you should be doing it. And as far as the structure of our, of our mayor and council members goes, I don't have any issue with it. I'd be opening to hear why there may be issues with it. But in its current state, I, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
Boy, I must look shady or something, because when I became a candidate, I had to sign an ethics form that said I would not do things unethical or take gifts of over $5. So, and I have.
So, and I have met a number of city council people out for a beer to, just to learn things. And I want to be perfectly clear, everybody was insistent that it was separate checks. So what I can see right now is that the financial gains, from what I can see as a citizen, I totally agree, people should not be gaining financially from this position or any other position in the city government. So I totally support that. If that is going on, we should stop that. The recording of the working sessions seems, I would be, interesting, so I would totally support that. And the structure of the city council and the mayor, I totally believe in that what we have works well. There's other, there's two different types of ways to run cities that are common, and the strong mayor is what City of Minneapolis and the City of St. Paul have, and I believe that is just not working well.
Thank you. And then we will have candidate Pointner, Williams, and Gregor. Candidate Pointner.
Thank you. I, too, have no problem with recording of the study sessions, and I kind of wonder why that either never happened or why we can't. I don't know if there's rules. As for financial gains and appearance, I also had to sign that for, write out everything that I, where I have, which I have nothing. I also believe that the structure of our council meetings are fine. If there's something that someone feels is not working correctly, I'd love to hear more about it, though. I'm open to listening, but I think right now I'm fine with how things are structured. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to remember in this whole discussion that city council people are servants. They're servants to serve our community. They're not to be served, but to do the serving. I think it's also important that recording should be okay. We want to err on the side of transparency so that there be no appearance of impropriety whatsoever, let alone impropriety, but the appearance of impropriety. And I have no problem with our current city council structure. I think it's good to have a city council that can work together regardless of what their differences might be. So I am fine, but I think it's important upon us, as city council perspective candidates, to always remember that we want to listen first, learn second, and implement third the thoughts and ideas that come from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Gregor.
I've been serving on committees and commissions for five years now in the city of Plymouth, and every year I signed that ethics disclosure. And when I filed for office, I signed it again, and I'm pretty sure if elected, I'll do the same. So there is a code of ethics that is important for maintaining standards here on the city council. And my only question is, you know, is there a process? Should that be violated? And that is something that I think would be important to look into, especially at the council level. As for our, the way our mayor and council arrangement works, I think it's great that all seven people on the council, including the mayor, have an equal voice and an equal vote. And I commend our mayor for calling on each city council member in meetings in making sure that everybody is able to speak up. And I know that study sessions are informal. I've attended many of them, but I think that there's really an importance in transparency for our government.
Thank you. Moving on to question seven. As a council candidate, what is your position on Plymouth's affordable housing policies and programs? What changes, if any, would you recommend? And we will go in reverse order with candidates Gregor, Williams, and Pointner.
Affordable housing is definitely an issue here in our city. I've seen the value of my house go up. I'm sure many of you have as well. And maybe that's good for me someday down the line when I want to sell my house, but it makes it challenging for our city to be welcoming to new residents. And as I've been on the Planning Commission, one of the things that we take into account oftentimes is what new development there might be, what housing we might be adding in our city. And I think a key part of creating affordable housing is creating more housing. And so the Planning Commission has approved everything from single-family homes in the northwest part of the city to more high-density apartment buildings in the southeast part of the city. And adding more housing is gonna help with the supply and demand issue. I think that we need to have a spectrum of affordability for people in our city, and we need to really see some stronger economic integration. Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, one of the most important challenges in our city is, starts with understanding how affordable housing is critical for our local employers, employees, and the educational opportunity success for all of our children. It's critical for us to understand and know that when we have public housing, it's something that helps our entire community. I'm a commissioner on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and right now we have over a thousand people on the waiting list for affordable housing. We have over another thousand waiting for moderate-income housing. And when you deal with challenges like that, you've got to find solutions to solve those problems, because those problems just won't go away and disappear on their own. It requires that we have a partnership, that we all work together to solve these problems in a meaningful way that makes our city the best and the brightest that it becomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Pointner.
This is an important topic for me, and I feel very passionate about affordable housing discussions, because as I said at the beginning, affordable housing means different things to different people. It's not a simple one-size-fits-all. And it's also about the life phases that we have in the city of Plymouth. We have young, first-time homebuyers that would like to come in, and we have seniors who have just too much work in their current homes but have nowhere else to go. So I think it's super important for the city council to help promote and help accept that there are different phases and different needs in our city. And this also ties in, and I also said at the beginning, to the employment. I moved, I worked in Plymouth, shopped in Plymouth, and then I moved to Plymouth. And I love living in Plymouth, and I know that there are plenty of people that would love to work here and live here. And I think that in order to do that, we need to open up and allow different levels of housing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
So when I've been out, I recently met a number of people that lived in the Common Bond Development located at County Road forty-seven in Shenandoah. And this is a great neighborhood that's considered affordable housing, and these are sincere people that are working hard for their families. And the stories that they shared with me are no different than the stories that I heard when I met with people that lived on Bass Lake. They want a safe, quiet neighborhood where everyone looks out for each other. The Common Bond neighborhood is literally across a beautiful wetland from an area where their houses cost many times more. And as I spent time there, it's very clear that a wide range of housing can be blended together. Just like any other project in life, it takes vision, planning, patience, and perseverance. And having a place to call home is important to everyone, and I'm all for helping people who need help. We need, we all know people who need help for a short period of time while they face an issue, and we all need people that need help for their entire life due to health or other issues. I do believe we need to balance the taxpayer's support for the people that need help, but we also need to allow the free market to work and have businesses pay what they need to attract and retain their employees that they need.
Thank you. Candidate Zezmer.
Thank you, Melissa. Obviously, affordable housing is an important issue, and I think, again, we need to look at it and be fiscally responsible about it. Overwhelming majority of people that I've spoken to all say we are, we do not want high-density housing. And it's our job as the council to listen to the people, especially the people around the area where housing would be built. So I think it's very important to have a thoughtful conversation of how do we bring in affordable housing while listening to the residents? Another thing, people, I've heard overwhelmingly is, how do we reduce our carbon footprint? If you bring in high-density housing, you increase your carbon footprint. So I think we definitely need to be fiscally be responsible about it, and we need to have a really thoughtful conversation about how we can do it.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you. I think there's always a primary need for stability, and a key aspect to the health of any community is making sure that people can live in that community and then continue to live in that community throughout their life. I think some things that the council can do is to continue to support public and private partnerships. There are state grants available. There's also some tremendously inspirational leaders in our community who are working on those relationships and those partnerships. The recent opening of Cranberry Ridge is an excellent example of this. And there's also levers that council members can pull here as issues come before the council. You want a variance? Sure. What are you doing for affordable housing? There's trade-offs and ways that we can use our role to make sure that that's a priority for our community.
Thank you. Question eight. And we will be going in the order of candidate Pointner, Page, and Williams, to start with. So candidate Pointner. How will you address homeowners' concerns regarding special assessments on street maintenance?
Street maintenance has to happen to have, and it's probably one of the most nonpartisan things that we can do in the city. We need to have good streets. We need them plowed, and we need to not have huge potholes, because that also affects our cars, and then that costs more money. I think there needs to be a serious discussion with staff and the council on the level of what is going to happen and what is the cost. And we have to decide at what level we're actually going to provide to our residents. I think it's a tough, it's a tough issue. It's a tough topic, but we need to be able to say that our quality of life, and that includes the streets, stays good and well in Plymouth. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Page.
This is an interesting topic. I have not honestly given it a lot of thought, so I think, first of all, we need to know what the lifespan of the roads are in Plymouth. I know that we have, you know, varying areas depending on the commercial load that comes across. But one thing I will tell you, we live in a little cul-de-sac, and every Thursday, right, we get multiple garbage trucks. We get multiple recycle trucks. It seems like if we could reduce the number of volume, even just through the residential area, that would reduce the wear and tear on the roads. But I will, I do know that the road that I lived on was repaved, and the assessment was assessed, and I think that it's just part of living in Plymouth and having the great infrastructure that we all enjoy.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I also agree. I think it's very critical that we invest in our infrastructure, in our roads, in our bridges, and all of our streets are only part of that infrastructure. We have so many other things to be concerned about. Water, water quality, making sure that we don't have accidents during the wintertime. But it's vitally important that we remember that we have to keep our finger and fingers on the pulse of what's transpiring in our community. Therefore, we need to always be in a position where we be ahead of the challenges that face us. So we need to establish what our objective is in terms of our infrastructure, a timeline associated with that, what that cost might incur, and how we mitigate the challenging expenses on homeowners in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will have candidate Peterson, Gregor, and Zezmer. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you. I have also been out there knocking on several hundred, more than a thousand, doors and along Gleason Lake Road in Ward Two of Plymouth. I have heard this concern. And I think the question was, how are you going to address homeowners' concerns who are subject to those special assessments? And I think reinforcing to them that there, it's, there's an assessment, but there's a benefit that's coming on the other side of that, and the improvement in the infrastructure and the improvement in their roads that they will enjoy on the other side of that. So that's, I think, one way to help listen to them and hear their concerns and let them know that you hear what they're experiencing with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gregor.
I have to admit that I was out door knocking with candidate Peterson on Gleason Lake Road, and this exact issue came up. And Gleason Lake Road is a good example of where the equity comes in on these special assessments. That's a busier thoroughfare. A lot of people use that road to get to somewhere else in town, to their house, maybe on a cul-de-sac. And so is it equitable to give a special assessment to a home on a major thoroughfare for a bigger rehabilitation project? I will be honest, I don't know exactly how we calculate those assessments, especially on thoroughfares. But I think that it's something that's important for us to look into. I used to live in St. Louis Park, and I believe in St. Louis Park, they have built a reserve and sort of maybe have a slightly higher annual tax, but there's never a special assessment for your property, and they have a standard rotation of the roads and the maintenance. And that way, it's an equitable treatment for everybody.
Thank you. Candidate Zezmer.
Yeah, I also admit this is not something I had thought of, hasn't come across my desk, as they say. But I would say, I mean, I think we're all in this together, so I, you know, first instinct is to say, well, why are we treating some people different than we are treating others? But it would be definitely something that I would be, I would have to listen to the residents more on that one, and we would have to have, I think, a study session just on that topic alone. But, yeah, initially, I think we're kind of all in this together, so.
Thank you. So you will be relieved, question nine is the last question of the evening. The Plymouth City website states, "A core value of the city of Plymouth is protecting the environment. Neighboring cities have climate action plans. Some have joined the open, excuse me, the Green Steps program. What goals to protect the environment would you encourage for Plymouth?" Do you want me to read that again? Because I, okay. The Plymouth City website says, "A core value of the city of Plymouth is protecting the environment. Neighboring cities have climate action plans. Some have joined the Green Steps program. What goals to protect the environment would you encourage for Plymouth?" And the order will be candidate Gregor, Pointner, and Williams. Candidate Gregor.
I spent four years serving on our Environmental Quality Committee, and I wished we could create a climate action plan. I feel that our city is doing a lot of good things for the environment, and one of the things that our committee brought forth was the Green Steps program. And I was disappointed to see that it was voted down several years ago. So I think that's something we should consider bringing back, because it would demonstrate that Plymouth can be a leader when it comes to climate and environment. There's a lot that goes on with environment. We, you know, water is a critical part of our city, and we need to be able to protect that. We need to protect our homes from flooding and droughts and all of that. So it would be very, a key priority of mine to give the EQC a little bit more oomph in suggesting policies and priorities for the city.
Thank you. Candidate Pointner.
I happened to watch the debate that happened with the council around the Green Steps program, and I have to admit that I was slightly confused as to why we didn't join it, other than I felt like it came down to money and who had kind of the right to make a decision. I don't think it's a controversial, it shouldn't be a controversial issue to join the Green Step program. You drive across, and Golden Valley has it, you drive down to Hopkins, and you walk in and you see those three steps, and you just wish, well, why are we behind when we are really a city that is so strong in value, the environment? And as Clark said, we should be leading. I think that it being a voluntary program, we've already completed some of the steps. And so if it's a voluntary program, and we don't want to do the next one, we should be able to just not do it. So I believe strongly that we should lead, as stated, and as stated by our website, and get back in to have this discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I think it's critical that we address this environmental issue. As we all know, the Environmental Quality Committee was established in nineteen ninety-four, designed to enhance- to enhance and preserve the natural environment of our city. We've also been involved in some of the logistical issues that occur on a day-to-day basis: lawn maintenance, waste and recycling, water quality, and home upgrading. I think the one thing that we can all agree is, regardless of our differences on opinions and timeframes, we all have children, or most of us have children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren. We want to leave them an environment that's going to be most conducive for their health and long-term well-being. And that starts with us making the investments today. Investments were made prior to us being here today to help us to get to this particular level that we're at. We now know much more than we ever knew before. Why wouldn't we not want to make the future better for our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren? Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, we will have candidate Peterson, followed by Page and Zeismar. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you. Climate change is real and serious, and we should be part of the solution. It's not just about us. It's also about what is beyond us. The Green Step Cities Program is a non-regulatory, free voluntary program that provides a clearinghouse of best practices and provides resources for cities to take action. It also sets a tone and acknowledges environment and climate change as a priority for our community. Previously, it was voted down. I am in favor of taking another look at that. I also understand that the Green Step Cities has, at each step, an opportunity for council to decline to take the next step. So let's take the first step and be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe the environment is here for us all to use and enjoy. It's also our great responsibility to be stewards of the environment for future generations to come, like we all agree. And I've been a resident of Schmidt Lake for 20 years, and I'm passionate about preserving our natural resources, the lakes, the wetlands, the parks, the trails, the open green spaces. In fact, I've testified at the state Capitol for legislation, legislation regarding green, clean waters on several occasions. Preservations of these incredible resources must be a top priority, and once they're gone, it's almost impossible to get them back. Plymouth has a long history of using taxpayer dollars to purchase, purchase strategic tracts of land in each of our four wards to preserve this environment, and I would support continuing this policy to ensure open green spaces for the generations to come. And how this plays into the Green Steps, I, I agree that we should take a look at it as a city, and if it makes sense financially, we should do it. But I think what the city of Plymouth has been doing in the past has been working very well.
Thank you. I will now call on you for your closing statement. Did I miss you, candidate Zeismar? I did. Go, please go, please go, please, please.
Thank you. Not that I have too much to add to that, because again, I, I think the environment is something we can all agree on that we need to do better, and we need to be leaders and make sure our actions reach beyond our city. One of the things that I would like to do is create some kind of an environmental stewardship class that we could present to residents. Because having, you know, saying, oh, you need to do better with the environment, and I'm pro-environment, well, that's one thing, but you also have to have the tools and the knowledge to know what that means. And it starts at home. So that is one of the projects that I would have, would be to try to create some kind of class to add to something that candidate Gregor had started, was the environmental, am I saying this right, the Environmental Citizens Academy? I would love to just expand on that, so, and give people tools so they can bring them home, so we can teach our next generation exactly what we need to do to, to, to do better.
Thank you. And you'll be delighted to know you are first for the closing comments. And you each have two minutes. So I will call on candidate Zeismar, please.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for, for putting this on tonight and hosting us. Thank you. Again, my name is Lee Zeismar. I'm, I'm going to kind of just reiterate a lot of the sentiments that I've had this evening already. You know, I believe it is the city's, the city council's job to preserve, protect, and ensure the beauty and prosperity of the city. And we do this by proactively maintaining and improving our infrastructure and the lives of ours, of our residents. Everyone deserves the right to be safe. Plymouth has a first-class, nationally-recognized public safety department, and I will always work to make sure our police and firefighters do have those tools, training, and support that they need, and that our residents have opportunities to learn about fire safety, crime prevention, and, and first aid. And as I said earlier, this is something our Community Emergency Response Team that we're working on already. We need to be an attractive place to do business and to live, and to be mindful of how we bring those together. We have an excellent park and rec department that provides year-round classes and entertainment. Where approximately 2,000 people every year volunteer, myself included. And we can combine our park and rec and our public safety with our parks and our trails and our lakes and our safe streets. It makes a pretty great quality of life. But we need to be diligent in our efforts to make sure that all of these things are available and accessible to all residents, and to make sure that everyone knows that they are welcome and safe here. We've done a good job at protecting and preserving our environment, and I'm committed to making sure that this continues and expanding on the work that they've done. We need to be leaders, ensuring our work has an impact beyond our own community. An environmental stewardship starts at home, but as I mentioned, you need to have the right tools and the knowledge. And so I think we can bring classes to the public to help with that. Again, my name is Lee Zeismar. I'm asking for your vote in November, so please vote Lee Zeismar. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will have candidate Gregor.
Thank you again to the League for hosting this forum, and to my fellow candidates for taking the time to be here and to come before the community to share their ideas and their viewpoints. This has been a great discussion. I really also want to thank my family for being here and for their support in this whole endeavor of a campaign. Many of the topics that arose tonight are priorities that I want to bring forth to our city council, from public safety to environment and taking our leadership there to the next level, to equity, to development, which has a lot of opportunity for transforming our city, to quality of life. I'm proud of the five years of service that I've given to our city and my leadership in creating programs like the Environmental Academy. I want to do more like that. I want to continue to build community in Plymouth. We're a big city, and I want to ensure that we maintain the closeness and connections and inclusiveness that can keep us tight-knit. Being connected to our community is critical to understanding the needs of Plymouth. And that comes back to listening. I've been listening. In the year I've been working on this campaign, in my committee and commission service while knocking on doors and attending forums and meetings on issues that are important to our city, I will continue to listen, and I will work to lift up your voice. As we close, I want to acknowledge the leaders who have come before me, who have sat in these seats and been wise and faithful stewards of our community. And I want to acknowledge those who were here even before them as stewards of this land. If elected, it's my hope that I can build on the solid foundation that they have laid, and that I can steward Plymouth in the years to come. I encourage you to visit my website, clarkforplymouth.com, and I ask for your vote this November.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson.
Thank you for the great discussion tonight from my fellow candidates and for all the participants here tonight. I'm honored to have been a part of this process. I've been campaigning for well over a year. This is not something that I have done on a whim or that I take lightly. I've been working hard and meeting you at the hundreds of doors that I've knocked. I'm doing the hard work, and I'm serious about serving you well. My family is a military family. My husband served 13 years in the active-duty military as a helicopter pilot with deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan, which required sacrifice of our entire family. I know service to community, and I'm guided by its values. My campaign is about leadership first. It is my foundational cornerstone, my passion, my drumbeat, and it will guide everything I do as your city councilperson. If you hear nothing else from me tonight, hear this. Where an issue comes before me, it will be my obligation to fully understand it, to seek out alternate views, ask hard questions, and to analytically and objectively consider the expertise and the data. I'm committed to making sure that this role remains nonpartisan and to making sure that everyone has my ear. Leaders do not just cast votes. We are responsible for setting a positive tone of respect, civility, collaboration, and consensus building. I aim to be a steward of not just our community's resources, but also of your trust. I invite you to check out my website, petersonforplymouth.com for more information, and please, if you're in Ward Two, vote for Julie Peterson this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to be able to express the various views that we've heard this evening. I want to thank all the various candidates and their respective views as well. We're living in a time where it's critical that our community comes together. We read every day about challenges that are affecting us from all walks, from every aspect, internationally, nationally, and our local communities, and so on and so forth. But as representatives of this city council, our number-one obligation, as I stated earlier, is to be a servant, a servant of our community, not to be served. And as I stated earlier, I'm a part of our Rotary Club, an organization whose motto is "Service Above Self." That is, the basics for all of our foundation is to make life better for everyone around us. Your talents, gifts, and abilities were not meant solely for yourselves. They were meant for all of the people who are around you, to make life better for all of us. And by all of us working together and making life better, it becomes better for not only us, but our future generations to come. I want to also say that it's critical that we also continue to work the various areas of priority, such as enhance and sustain public safety, as I mentioned earlier, broader enhanced education, which we did not get a chance to get into this evening, for all students in our community, including YZ and Armstrong. We've talked about the criticality of affordable housing. Another issue we didn't get a chance to get into is public health, particularly mental health. When we reflect upon what COVID has done for us the last several years, look how COVID has affected senior citizens, students, and young people. Look at the learning disabilities that have occurred over this course of time. I want to be able to attract commerce and business to our community. I want to maintain the quality of parks and recreation our community that we're so well-known for. And so I want to thank you once again for the opportunity, and I want to thank you for the opportunity of learning from all of my fellow candidates here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Poyntner.
I too want to once again thank the League of Women Voters and all the candidates here today. I was a single mom who raised my daughters to value education and public service. Both my daughters and their husbands have embraced these beliefs. I hold a master's in organizational leadership, policy, and development, as well as degrees in both social studies education and sociology of crime. All the experience in my life have led to who I am now. I ran in 2018 because I wanted the people in Ward Four to feel like they had a voice. My priorities stay, have always been and stay with affordable housing and development that will support the businesses and the employers in the city of Plymouth, the environment, and specifically solar, which I didn't get to talk about, and public safety. In my daily job, I'm a researcher. I look at a problem and see its variable pieces. In my role on the Planning Commission, it is important to use this experience. If I came into the meeting with my own agenda or my own bias, I am fixing the results. I have proven I will listen to the city staff, the petitioner, the Plymouth residents, and other commissioners before I make any decisions. I will take all my experience, passion, and knowledge, as well as a promise to listen when I am elected to the council. Since 2018, I have studied the city's budgets, followed the council meetings, asked the questions, and have served the Planning Commission. Plymouth is my home, and I know that when its residents are involved and feel listened to, the committees and commissions, I hope that we can feel that there is representation, and I hope that we get a new renewed view for the city to get people involved in the planning, in commissions and committees. I also want you to watch for what's happening in Ward Four and the Prudential site, because I think you're going to be really happy. I hope I can count on your vote in a race, and if you would like more information about me, please see poyntnerforplymouth.com.
Thank you. This concludes the Plymouth City. Did I forget you again? Oh, my God!
She said it was going to happen once.
I thought it was going to happen once. We're up to four now. It's terrible.
Oh, man.
They're going to fire me.
So, we'll fire you in about seven minutes, okay? So thanks to everybody for being here, and thanks for this opportunity. It's been, it's been a learning experience that I'll never forget. So we're, we're all applying for a job, and you guys are the hiring managers, right? So I think when you're hiring somebody, you really want to know who you're hiring. We've talked a lot about our policies, but you really want to know who are you hiring? So I'm going to tell you just a little bit about me. So people that know me know that I love to talk, and I love to share ideas. But the council does not require great listening, or talking skills. Instead, it requires great listening skills. And after visiting thousand, of the thousand homes and listening to hundreds of stories, it's apparent that there are very few easy answers to the complex issues that we face in our constantly changing world. So my wife Jenny, who's right out there, we've been married for two years. We have a blended family of four children, two who are married and two who are still in college. We have three grandsons, and we're expecting our first granddaughter literally any day right now. So it's pretty exciting. My first wife Lisa tragically, Lisa tragically and unexpectedly passed away suddenly from a brain aneurysm. She worked in the very diverse District 281 schools and the creative play program. Jenny lived in Chile for eight years after college and now does fundraising for a Christian organization. Jenny's children are half-Chilean, and Spanish is their native language. Our family is more and more like a typical family. Diversity is no longer an occasional exception. It is quickly becoming the norm. I share this part of my story because life changes, and sometimes it changes very quickly. And as neighbors who love Plymouth, we need to learn from our past, cast a future for the future, and get to work on creating a great legacy for future generations. It takes a lot of listening, patience, perseverance, and hard work. And if I'm elected to this Plymouth City Council, I look forward to doing that hard work and to help build a community where we can all serve one another. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. And I offer an apology to you as well. Now we can conclude the Plymouth Candidate Forum. So I was going to ask you to join me in thanking the candidates with your applause. That was fantastic. I just want to also say that we want to thank them for being part of the democratic process, for running for office, and for being willing to serve our community. So thank you very much. And thank you to all of you who have come. Thank you to our volunteers. I want to say that, and to the people who are watching us online. And especially, we need to thank the Plymouth City staff for supporting this event, and the CCX media for broadcasting live, live streaming and recording the forum this evening. On-demand viewing can be accessed at our website at l w v w p a dot org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vot411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on the issues. Please remember to vote in the November 8th election, in person or by absentee ballot. Your vote is your voice. The League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both women and men, and you can learn more again at our website, l w v w p a dot org. Thank you and good night.